Council Bluff Savings Bank. Our goal is to help you, your families, and your businesses grow and prosper for generations. We take pride in our community, whether it's volunteering our time or helping individuals, families, and businesses succeed. We provide you with the personal service and attention you deserve. With over 220 years of banking experience, decisions are made locally. We are Council Bluff's people operating at Council Bluff's bank to help Council Bluff's be a better place to work and live. Council Bluff Savings Bank. Hometown banking, the way it used to be. Member FDIC.
Okay, welcome everybody. We will open the study session by reviewing the agenda. Are there any questions on the consent agenda?
May I have Mr. Morton's first?
Yeah, we have his on before this.
Which one's that on him, sir?
That's on Compton, Morton, on the alarm.
Oh, okay. They add on the alarm?
Yes.
Sure, we can do that now.
Mr. Morton? Did you want to address the council?
That's right. Compton, Morton is the name. I'm just questioning the way Lieutenant Flores addressed this false alarm charge. Incidentally, I went here and I paid it. But the installation was very flawed. Our new pastor from Texas just came here, had alarm installed in the parsonage, and apparently it was... Two things were wrong. A.D.T. actually sent a letter which I gave to Lieutenant Flores, admitting that it was a faulty installation. And like when we have a storm, like what happened here recently, it would trigger the alarm just like that. So when the police arrived, they would not see any breakage. I just returned to Texas to get the rest of my furniture, and I escaped the storm that came. But again, the alarm went off. You know, I told the alarm company, I told them not to call the police because I realized something was still wrong with the alarm system. Now that's what I'm questioning. He did tell me, I did talk to Lieutenant Flores, and he did say that, well, we really think your statute is written. Even if there is a malfunction, a mechanical malfunction, we're still liable to pay. You know, I'm still appealing it on the basis of a faulty installation, which problem has not been solved. So I thought you can give me a little positive hearing on that. Once again, I still went ahead and paid the fine. Thank you very much. Any questions?
You indicated that you've already paid the fine?
Yes, I have, yes.
Okay.
Since, you know, Lieutenant Flores did say... May I read this for you?
We have it.
We have it. Yeah, we have it.
If you have it, okay.
But can the alarm company, since they installed it wrong, can't you submit the money to them for reimbursement?
Yes, I would like to do that. But I don't think I can do that on the basis of what he has written. If he can rewrite it in such a way that stating that the council or the city will accept the excuse that it was a faulty installation, I guess I can get the alarm company to refund the money. But I don't think I can justify doing that the way he has written this. That's, at least that's my thought.
And that's because he, that the hearing officer basically said, well, he didn't believe the explanation because the alarm company hadn't returned his call. And that's how I read it. Did I miss something?
Well, I... No, he, the part I don't like how he's, how he worded it is that the alleged reason was a malfunction, he's saying here does not appear to be accurate. That I did not understand. He's actually saying here, if I'm interpreting him correctly, that what the company is saying is wrong. The company is admitting it's a faulty installation.
Sir, if I understand the information correctly, it sounds as if they wrote the letter after the officer wrote that statement. And to piggyback a bit on my colleague's statement, it's, at that point, you know, if the alarm company isn't returning his calls and he doesn't have the letter yet, I can see where he could say, well, it doesn't look like it's a malfunction because I don't have anything in front of me to show that. But now you do have that letter. Have you asked the alarm company in light of that whether they will? Because regardless of what it says on the citation, it appears to me in their letter they admit, it seems pretty clear to me, they admit that the reason it went off was their error, a mistake. And so it seems to me that, based on what they themselves have written, that if you submit the, I suppose, the copy of the ticket, maybe a copy of the council check or however you pay for it, I can't imagine they wouldn't reimburse it based on their letter. It appeared to be a pretty, pretty good apology.
No, incidentally, he had this. This is not after the fact.
Oh.
He had this. This is why he called the company. But you know how these companies are. You're not going to get Zachary Selak just because you called once. I mean, I've tried several times before I can get him myself. You know, so the point that he just called once and didn't get the person, you know...
But you wouldn't have to turn that letter in. You could just turn in the bill, you know, to the alarm company, and probably I would assume they probably would reimburse you for it. You know, I wouldn't give them that letter from the Flores. I don't think they need that. There's no reason for them to need that letter.
Have they made the, have they corrected the problem? Because you said you just had another alarm last week, which would be the third one because the first one's free.
That's right.
The second one's a penalty, or from second on is a penalty. So you've had three recent ones, it sounds like.
No, I've just returned from Texas, so I've not been able to call them as yet. I just came back this weekend. So I plan this week to try and get a hold of them to see exactly what's going on. So that's where I am with that. So you're saying that...
Is there, Dick, what's your suggestion on the process?
The reason this ordinance was put in place and these penalties were established was because we were getting a lot of false alarms, a lot of officers being called out, and essentially wasting a lot of city police time. We built some cushion in there, the one false alarm per year that you get without any penalty. But after that, the idea is you need to get your system adjusted, and if you have a civil recourse back against your alarm company, I think I would encourage you to try to do just that.
I know that I have an older home, and on stormy days, when I know it's going to be really stormy, I don't set the alarm because my windows are so old that thunder makes them rattle, and it will set my alarm off. And again, it is still my system, and there's nobody breaking in. So I know I'm going to be responsible for it, so I just don't set it on, well, let me just say that on television.
Yes, nice work. Now we know, we're going to break in here on stormy days.
I mean, as well, I mean, there's not much newer than ours. So we all have to stay home on stormy days.
Yeah, we'll be home on all the stormy days from here on.
Yeah. So I think you should probably try to get reimbursed from the company. I don't know, what else?
I would say, sir, that I would try that first, and if they don't, I would love to hear the reason why. Certainly you could come back to us, and I'm sure we'd be glad to hear you out. And, you know, if you wanted to contact the mayor's office or any of us individually, I'm sure, but I have a hard time believing based on their letter that they're not going to pay the ticket. Quite frankly, it's, what sometimes is called the nuisance value, the cost of the ticket just paying it is probably a lot less than then having to keep dealing with it. So I imagine they'll just pay it in any event. I'd be really surprised if they don't. But I think you ought to try that first before we would even consider whether we'd waive it. But I have to say that I'm not inclined to waive those sorts of things because, again, it does take officer time, and everybody does, like the mayor and like the city attorney said, it takes, you do get, in essence, one free B a year. And beyond that, it sounds like the fault was with the company, and so they're the ones who want to pay, not the taxpayer.
And if I recollect when we did that, it's about a 45-minute officer time because they sit there and wait for somebody to come and respond. They can't leave, and they can't get back on the street while they're doing it.
No, I pay my own share of them.
Okay, or I try and adjust the way I had for the last time. Just tell them not to call the police, or else. According to your system...
Sounds like you need to fix it. I'm certainly no expert on alarms, but it shouldn't just randomly go off.
I love to see something is wrong, so I'm going to go about doing that, and thanks a lot for your advice. Thanks for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good to get to meet you two. Under negative circumstances, I hope to be better next time.
Sure.
Thanks again.
Welcome to Council Bluff's. And I'm sure, I'm sure, thanks for getting this from here on out. Surely they will.
Hopefully, thanks a lot. Okay, bye-bye.
Bye.
So this is a study session, no action to be taken, but I would ask, under other, you actually make a motion and make an decision on this?
Okay. And that's tonight?
Yeah.
All right. Anything on the consent agenda? Anything on the public hearings?
Yeah, I've got a couple of things on public hearings. I'll get there first. Here with me a second. If anybody's got something else, I've got to get to mine, so...
Is that where the list of lenses is, or is it...
Yeah, I've got questions on the Northway, there's two of them, I think, Northway Urban Revitalization Plan. I guess my question is, is that there's been a large investment done in that neighborhood in order to cause economic development. Is there a point where we should be able to expect for private business then to be able to then develop in that area without assistance? There was an awful lot of money was spent with the Walmart going in. I guess I'm rather surprised that we would have to offer any incentive to do anything at the front door of a new Walmart. Is there a gap somewhere that I need to know about that it's not financially feasible with the new Walmart right there?
Well, what you have before you tonight is both a resolution and an ordinance. Resolution actually requires you to create a plan. The ordinance actually sets up the district. Okay, so as far as, you know, financial questions, I would defer to the developer to answer that. I would say the primary issue to me is the fact that, so we have Walmart. That does not change the neighborhood dynamics, the income, the population, the ability of the purchasing power of that area. And I think that will be reflected in essentially the lease rates that they can charge. That's the only rationale I can give you.
Okay, because I'm thinking, you know, on the district end of it, I know that, I guess I'm just thinking that once we decide, you know, as a city to invest in a neighborhood like that to try to bring economic development, I would hope that there'd be a point where we could step off and say, okay, we've invested this, this neighborhood now has what it needs to take off on its own without any more, you know, investment in it. It's just, it's like, kind of like, where, at what point then does private business pick up and do this? It just feels like we just keep having to go back to these neighborhoods and keep on incenting them. I'm starting to wonder if the economic development we're trying to encourage is ever going to that point where we don't have to keep incenting those areas.
Well, I understand your concern, but I think this is, you know, quite frankly, it's not located necessarily in a convenient interstate exit like I-80 or 29. It doesn't have the traffic patterns that Broadway has. And, you know, the dynamics of the neighborhood are really not strong.
So, but should we not expect then, that, I know when we were working on the Walmart plan, we were, it was explained how many cars were going to be coming into that area every day, and how much was going to increase the business in that area due to that. And that was one of the reasons, of course, that that and the blight that was out there that needed to be cleaned up was another reason to work on that. But the blight's gone now, and that should be a rather large drawing business, shouldn't it?
It should. It should. And I, you know, I do, you know, want to also indicate to you that, you know, I think Mr. Gordman had requested originally like a 10-year TIF and a 60% rebate. What's being offered in this urban revitalization package is half of that.
Is the property then on the, would be the east side of North 16th? Is that, that's not included in this district? This district that we're doing tonight is just for this property?
That's correct.
And it's not expanded any further than that?
No.
Okay. So do we have to wait then until somebody has requested it on the other side of the street to include that area, or...
No, we could have easily prepared an urban revitalization plan for the whole 16th street quarter.
Okay, all right.
I mean, and if that's what you wish.
I just questioned, it always feels a little strange when you're doing it just for one...
I understand.
...person, so, or one entity. All right, that answers my question on the district then. Thank you. Mr. Gordman, can I ask some of those questions out of you? Is there a gap then between the expectation for this retail business and what it's going to cost to establish it?
Sure. What would you like to know?
The dollar amount of the gap, the reason for the request for the abatement.
All right. Are you familiar with the layout and what we're proposing?
Yes.
Because we did bring some material here we could show you.
Thank you.
Okay. The, by the way, this is Deborah Smith, who's Executive Vice President of Gordman Properties, and I'm Jerry Gordman, President of Gordman Properties. The building costs are estimated at $5,708,000, and the onsite improvements are $1,006,000. In addition, we acquired four additional acres, which cost $75,000, which will have to be developed as far as what we're going to be doing on improvements for flood control. And that is on the west side of our property. Also, I will tell you that there are other things that we're going to be doing, but I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
So if you're at $7.6 million and then the $75,000 for the additional lot for the stormwater runoff, and then what's your expectation then on how this...
Well, there's also engineering and architectural costs, and that's just, about $500,000.
So the reason for the request is it's not financially feasible to move forward and make a cost flow without the abatement?
Let me say this. The property is, first of all, if it wasn't for Walmart, we wouldn't be here because we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have determined that this would have been feasible at all under any circumstances. If you're familiar with our property, you know that we have lost major tenants in that location. There was a relocation of a Gordman's, of a Gordman's building to the south side of the city. And of course, we also lost a Hy-Vee to Broadway. And we've been, actually been working on this for about somewhere between three and four years. And I found that in the leasing activities, that it's fairly difficult to lease regardless of what we do and, because we have to have competitive lease rates. And that's not always easy because a lot of the things that we're doing are improving the site. And, for example, we're going to be putting in a new parking lot and new, 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 new structure for handling water and utilities. And we are going to co-own the street with Walmart. Even so, it has not been easy to find tenants for this location.
Do you have any yet?
We, we have just begun the leasing activities. We just returned from a major real estate convention, and I think we have some possibilities. But we, do we have any, any signed tenants yet? No, we don't.
That answers all my questions. I don't have any other questions, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
We can see those boards in your room.
Sure.
I'm sure it's just this, but it's bigger.
This, this gives you an idea of the layout of the shopping center. And by the way, I think this is going to be something that we all can be very proud of. This is the Walmart that's under construction, and this is the four acres that we referred to for the flood control. And then this is, we have demolished everything that we have with the exception of a small shopping center. And, but we just recently demolished about 30,000 square feet of shopping center, and this will be, this will be phase one. We're working on this building here, and we'll see what we have over here. And for those of you that are here, you might, you might be interested in taking a look at what the layout is for the entire shopping center. This is the Walmart, and this is our property. And this is, this is one tenant that will remain, and that's a daycare for the elderly, which we think is an excellent, excellent use for that property. This is a better look at what we're, at what we're doing. And this will be the front of the entrance of the Walmart. And this will be the street that goes, that will go to 16th Street with the stoplight. And this is a potential cell that will be, belong to Walmart. And of course, we have this property as you saw before. And what we're going to be doing is that this is an estimated layout of our grand new shopping center. Now, having said that, all of these things are dependent on the leasing activities. And that's what, that's what we have been working on. But on the other hand, part of it, part of what we're going to be doing is going to be dependent on what kind of help we can get on this because there's competition. But there's not anything on the north side of the city. And I think this would be a tremendous gateway to the city on 16th Street.
To answer your question about why we need to fund interest, I think Don Gross pointed out some interesting points. First of all, you know, the interchange is not great there. And, you know, most of the national retailers want to be where the local national retailers are, and that's on I-8. And so the problem that we've had in trying to lease this is, you know, the big box tenants back here are going to be in the national tenants, the ones that are going to pay rent. But they want to be where all the other national tenants are.
So they don't feel that Walmart's enough to put them there, really?
There are some national tenants that prefer not to be located with Walmart.
I can understand that.
And we think they're wrong. However, we don't, we don't, we don't sign the leases they do.
The other thing I look at is demographics, and they're kind of roughly, they want to guide, and the demographics in this area aren't great, and neither are traffic nights. And so when they're comparing those to other areas of the city, we're going to go somewhere else. And so the tenants that we're most likely to make their, you know, your low cost tenants, which makes it harder to do the ground up development, and you're not going to get high rents. And we also did this lease with the daycare center, and they tried that property after quite a long time, and they're not paying a lot of rent. I know I gave that information to my assistant, the partner for this, and everything we put them in was basically a cheap property if like one was tidy, and ordinance moved down, but their rent is clearly probably comparing to neighbors' chapter.
So when Gordmans moved out, is that when you started losing, well, like, the tenants? But now, are you, were you the same owner? Did you own that Gordmans, or is that a different entity from you?
I'm strictly in the real estate business.
Okay, so you didn't own that building?
At one time, in the 1970s, I was involved with Gordmans. And I was actually the person who operated the department store.
Okay.
Let me turn this around so that these folks can take a look.
I guess my own firm represents a...
And we think, we think it's a great plan. And, and I'm sort of optimistic, but to be in our business, you really have to be an optimist yourself. Let's see that, that's your... This is, this shows, this gives you a little bit more detail on what we're going to be doing.
If I may, are you, on the pad sites though, are you looking to, is it more of like restaurant? I appreciate it depends on what the market's, we should get...
This is another problem we have with something, and if we're going to do a redevelopment with Walmart, you're going to have a lot of restrictions on what we can do on the side. And one of the, one of the big issues that came up here was drainage. And so not only on the Walmart side, but also on our side. And so they ended up having to take about .78% of our property that we wanted originally to clean up and taken, and that's impacted our parking ratios. And Walmart requires that if the restaurant, they're going to turn to one of our parks. So it's unlikely there's going to be a rest activity because it really, really works really well.
You know, you refer to these as pad sites, but they're really not.
Oh, they're not?
This, this building will be 20,000 square feet.
Oh, okay.
This building will be approximately 18,000 square feet. And this will be...
Quite right, that's quite big.
A little over 60,000 square feet. So it's a lot more than what you see very often in a, what they call a shadow anchor that goes with, with Walmarts. This alone is bigger than most, than most shadow anchors. So it's really a major shopping center. You might want to turn this around a little bit too.
Surely, I know the mayor's gotten some comments that people at home can't see it, and that makes sense so that they could see what we're talking about.
We think, you know, one of the things that people say is, well, let's wait and see how Walmart does. And so that's, that's been a little bit of a problem too. We think we're going to hit past that, but I know that one of the things that we're going to have to do is have competitive leases. And, and almost everything in the city has been developed on the south side, and I think the north side really requires this kind of development. First of all, I think 16th Street is a much bigger, better street than it used to be at one time. And your full, your full interchange is at 25th Street, and it probably should have been at 16th Street.
This is not a cheap development because we've had to, because we've had to demolish everything that's there with the exception of the pipes.
Well, that's, you know, that's really where some of my concerns come in, and this is why. Because you owned that property at the time that it started to deteriorate. One wing of it, the roof caved in, and you had to take that down. I didn't see over the last 20 years... I didn't see over the last twenty years, even before Hy-Vee moved out, any updating, any renovating, anything to that property. And so I have a real problem with the fact that, you know, we could do this abatement, you could put this in and in twenty years, are you guys going to put any more money back into this building? Because I never saw anything on the last building. It got really run down. And, and that's what concerns me. I don't know that I want to reward that because if Walmart doesn't make it, then we know that, you know, no money will go back into this. And I don't, you know, at the time that it started getting run down, Hy-Vee was still there and it just got worse and worse. And so I'm just really, I'm really torn about, about doing this because I don't feel like that the prior years of ownership of this parcel of land has led me to believe that this, you know, contributing to this is going to make this stay nice in the future. I just don't know if the money will go back into it once it's up, if it's just that's what it is from now on and no updating to it. You know, it just really, that whole area got run down so badly when the Gordmans closed, which was interesting and I was glad that you told us that you weren't part of that closing, but, you know, it's.
Well, one, one reason why we lost the two biggest tenants in that, uh, in that shopping center had to do with support from the city and, and the county on, on, uh, funding for their move, for their, uh, for their relocation and, um.
So funding for Gordmans relocation down to the?
From Gordmans and from Hy-Vee.
I think I've seen it.
And as a matter of fact, I will tell you that we did our level best to keep Hy-Vee. And we said to, we said to Hy-Vee, uh, we'd like you to stay here and if you want to own your own, your own building, that's okay with us. We'd love to keep you here. And, um, apparently they had the kind of, of, uh, uh, offer that they, they couldn't really turn down on Broadway. They had the, the number one location on Broadway. And they have right now about a, I think it's close to a hundred thousand square foot store.
Yeah, it is, it's quite large.
And I, I will tell you that, that they're not pleased about the idea that, that Walmart is coming into this location. The point is that this Walmart is going to do some terrific things for the city. And let me tell you what, what it is. First of all, you may or may not know this, but this particular, the Walmart at the Lake, Lake Madison Center is the largest volume Walmart in the states of Nebraska, Iowa. One of the problems that they face though is that, is that the Walmart, uh, is so busy that they can't handle all the volume. When I say the biggest volume, the city of Grand Island has two Walmart supercenters that are, are, are two hundred thousand square feet each. And I mentioned Grand Island because it's a similar kind of population. Uh, and if you would ever analyze, uh, what's going on in Grand Island, uh, Grand Island's, uh, uh, development on Highwood Two Eighty-One has been very spectacular. And we, we were able to, uh, to work out something with the, with the, the city of Grand Island where we got some help in order for us to redevelop things. We are currently redeveloping, re, developing three shopping centers simultaneously. And, uh, so we have a lot on our plate and, uh, and yet I believe, I, I believe a lot in this, in this shopping center. And I think it will also be very good for the city. Any other questions you might have?
I'd just like to remind the council that, you know, the money that, a lot of the money that we had to spend, uh, or contribute on the Walmart site in part was due to making that site buildable, which I understand, but also the price of some of that land, which was Mr. Gordmans' land, was very expensive and we had to close some of that gap. So, you know, I, I just feel like that, that Gordmans came and asked us and they were supportive of Walmart. They wanted that to go because they owned the land, they wanted it to go there. The fact that there wasn't an interstate exit at that point, which concerned me at the time, I, you guys made me feel like that wasn't the concern, but now it is a concern. So I just, I, I really feel like the money was invested, there's a lot of money invested in the one parcel and I'm just not real game to expand it until we know if that will incent private industry to do it themselves. There's got to be a point where we pull back as a city and say, if I build a house, I'm not going to get my taxes abated. And we already have development up there that should show whether or not this works or doesn't work. But if we had continued to abate and incent in areas that we've already invested that much money in, how are we ever going to know if it works? If, if private industry will do it themselves? Or are we always going to have to do this? I mean, is that where we're at? We always have to do it?
I think it's going to depend somewhat on the location too. I mean, this, this is not right now currently an ideal location and you don't, I mean, if they do need, I mean, yeah, it's, that whole area is lacking as far as having a place that they can go to shop for.
Something on the land. We didn't own all the land on Walmart, but there were actually four different landowners.
Yes.
And the land that we sold to Walmart were actually pretty reasonable.
So the other, the store wasn't part of the real estate that you were handling in that transaction? That was separate?
And, and Walmart, to their credit, tore down everything.
Mm-hmm.
And they've done an awful lot of groundwork, but a lot of that money has gone to us. And I will tell you that we are planning to replace, uh, our parking lot with concrete parking lot. And we're going to have a, a really, very nice development. I think, I think we can make it work.
Store was actually owned by Kansas City and Indy.
Right.
Okay, and so, but, so the, the only thing you profited on from was just the one lot that you had? Is that all?
The only thing that we ended up doing was because these, you know, stormwater issues came up, we actually ended up giving to Walmart that point seven of an acre because the whole deal was going to fall apart without it. And in addition to that, we ended up having issues come up with our property because of that where we had to go and pay, we paid seventy-five thousand for that four acre tract. We're going to have to do all the work to actually, you know, use, make that usable for us, for our stormwater runoff. And there's going to be expenses to that too. So we've actually been very compromising and we haven't come out of this, you know, with, as yours said, we haven't received any kind of funding and we didn't own, sell our land to Walmart. I know some of those landowners were pretty tough to work with.
They were. And that's, and so I'm probably holding you responsible for some of the parcels we had to pay more for, but I guess I thought yours was one of them. Because I remember when we were going through all of that, I could have sworn yours was one of the parcels that.
You had the wetlands there, yeah?
Yeah. The, the Walmart project, did, did, did that involve a TIF district or is that TIF district? Which this is not, that the only thing that's being abated is the.
Three and a half million, but ended up more like three point eight if I remember right?
Yeah. So as opposed to a, a TIF, which requires an actual contribution from the city, we're, we're now abating the, the taxes on the improvements?
Yes.
So, so if this whole project does not work out, you end up getting the bill, but what we miss out i- is, is only the, the increased taxable value of, of that structure.
But with the TIF, it was the same situation in that it was abating the difference, which was basically zero, because I don't know what the basis, the base was on that, but it was the same situation in that.
Ground costs were estimating to be about seven point nine million and, um, the whole property is projected to be valued at the end of it at nine point two.
Okay.
So the existing property taxes right now are a hundred thirty-six thousand and the property taxes added are looking at two hundred and sixty-eight thousand.
Okay.
Don, do I have that right that the, there's additional tax consequences that go along with the TIF district, such as it impacts schools and the county and whatnot, but, uh, the, the impact on, uh, on, on the city is not the same?
The taxes neither, oh, do they still have to pay the school portion is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Not really. Uh, you know, in an abatement schedule, well, in an urban revitalization schedule, uh, they just indicated that there's a hundred thirty-six thousand dollars in property taxes being paid. Uh, that will be, continue to be paid, that will continue to go to the taxing jurisdictions. They will have the opportunity, uh, to file for property tax abatement on each phase that they do. They will have to increase the value of the property by, they have lots, didn't you? You have three lots? One lot, one lot. They'll have to increase the value each time they request property tax abatement by fifteen percent. But in theory, they could build, one of the outlot buildings in two thousand fourteen, file for tax abatement. Build the second one in two thousand fifteen, uh, and file for tax abatement on that. And do whatever they're going to do to the, you know, the old Hy-Vee block and, and file in a different year. So, or they could do it all in one year. So it, there's a little bit more flexible. Uh, the only difference in this and TIF is, is that, you know, TIF, we're basically capturing eighty, eighty-five percent of what gets paid. There still is a base there that is going to taxing jurisdictions. Uh, you could argue fifteen percent above and beyond the base is going to school districts, the city and the county. Um, in the end, you get to the same, same result. Uh, this is just a lot easier administratively, uh, for not only a developer or the finance department, our office, everybody, even the assessor in the county. Uh, because once we file this, once we file an abatement approval, that goes right to the assessor and he just incorporates it in their billings. So it's, it's fairly simple to administer.
As opposed to them paying it and then us processing the money and repaying them back?
Yeah. You could argue, you know, on, on the Walmart deal, if they don't, they don't build something, they're not paying taxes, so there's nothing to abate. If they don't build exactly what we set, then we have the out to say no too. Uh, so they're both pretty secure instruments.
Don, at some point though, last year or so, did, didn't, I seem to recall we did something with regard to parking, we reduced the requirement. Seem to recall there was some contractual.
There was a, an issue, a, with the setback and the landscaping and.
Parking and green space was the issue.
Was that?
I think they met their parking. I don't think we gave many variance on parking.
I think it was just green space, wasn't it?
Yeah. I think they got a reduction of.
Frontage in essence. I'm, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to keep all of it together in my mind, uh, just because I would agree that we need to look at it as a whole. I'm trying to think of, of, of the various things we've done or had to do, uh, various points and it seems to me that it has barely done what we do now or in the future.
You, you approved a planned residential overlay for this, which out basically proved the, the layout. Now, if they change their layout, that'll come back to.
I see, I see.
Uh, but every permit that comes in, we will look at it from the standpoint of, is he building the building where he said he was going to do, the signage and the landscaping, all that?
Didn't we allow the, the acreage he had to buy for his stormwater? We said, okay, we can use that as part of your green space. I remember that being an issue, wasn't it?
I think he argued that. I, I don't know necessarily that that.
We approved that. Yeah, it was really, it was very small. It had to do with trees or green space or something. It was very minimal.
It was about two percent of the site or two and a half percent of the site. Actually, it'll be more than what they have today.
Would this have any, uh, bearing on, let's say for example, to piggyback on Sherrod's comments about the east side of the street, uh, the hope of course of government incentives, well, taxpayer financed incentives is that it'll take off and private business will take over. Does this affect the east side of the street in any negative or positive way directly?
I would say the more development you have there, the more positive it is. I think the east side has got some major issues though.
So I don't know.
Drive by it and look at, quite frankly, its elevation compared to the street. You would have to do a significant amount of, of, of fill, uh, just to establish positive drainage. I have no idea what the quality of the soils are, so I assume they were going to have to surcharge just like Walmart did or what Gordmans doing right now. Uh, there are utilities that go up the Fifteenth Street, you know, corridor, uh, that just split the property, both sewer and electric. Uh, so I, that's, that's a very, very challenging site.
Isn't there, isn't there a rail line that's still active?
There's a rail, no, uh, there's a rail line, well, I suppose it's open.
Just not used?
It, well, it goes to the Swing Bridge, which is closed.
Yeah.
Um, the Canadian National still has a railroad right south of the Gordman property. I think that would be P or Q maybe?
Yes, yeah, but I thought they, that came up in one of our conversations too, didn't they?
Yeah.
They're not going to give it, I mean, they still own it, but they're not running any trains on it. It can't be used as.
Uh, we saw a, a letter on that saying that they wanted to abandon it and I quite frankly didn't understand it because then I heard some other department head saying that they still wanted to run trains on it and so how can you abandon it if they're going to run trains?
Okay.
I'm not sure what that all means.
We, we were interested in acquiring some of that, that program. We were, we were not successful.
Okay, that might, that's probably where I remember the discussion, that, that would have made up for some of that, yeah.
And it says, I will also point out that it hasn't been maintained also.
Oh, the rail?
That's right.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
We, one of many that don't get taken care of, so.
Any questions for Don or Mr. Gorman? All right. Anything else on the public hearings? Anything on ordinances for first reading? Oh, I'm sorry.
You know, you know what I do is I make the notes on the pages instead of on the front page, so it takes forever to. Go ahead if anybody else has anything on, on notes.
On, uh, I'm sorry. Did, did you find your spot or?
Well, yeah, I just had some questions on the Fifth Avenue, uh, offer to.
Thank you very much.
Purchase, thank you. Uh, the nine oh eight Fifth Avenue. You know what I'm wondering is, is we've held that for two years and I'm not sure which department's been having to log the mowing and stuff on that, but how much can we expect? I know that the county says that it's worth this much, but we've held it, haven't gotten any offers on it. How much are we spending mowing it every year and how do we start getting rid of some of this stuff?
I don't know what we're spending on. Do you know, Greg?
Do we have like an account where each one of those properties, any money spent towards that goes into that, is logged for that?
I have no idea.
Just be helpful.
Uh, we maintain stuff in the community development department, I could tell you after a talk with some people, but I assume this is six fifty seventy property.
It is.
And I assume, uh, Public Works has been maintaining.
And we have, um.
You know, as far as the price share, state law says that we do have to sell things for appraised value, a fair market value. Now, uh, we've been having some discussions internally about getting our handle around maintenance, uh, getting our handle around what we own. Uh, it is a bigger task than I think most people realize when you're talking about perhaps fifteen hundred parcels or more.
Right.
Uh, and categorizing that and determining what's surplus. Uh, but if you wish to have, uh, some discussion on how we go about pricing some stuff in some ways that maybe we can unload this stuff? I mean, I can, you know, just put it on the study assessment agenda and, and I'll give you some ideas.
I would love that because I know that in the past, when the market was better, we had some builders that would do some infill stuff. We had Habitat there for a while that would take a few lots, but it's harder for them when you only have one lot. It's not as cost effective for them, I'm sure, as if you can get like three in a row. So it's, I'm just not seeing these absorb.
Well, this is a buildable parcel.
Yeah.
But, um, is it?
But is it? And that's the question, yeah.
I mean, that's.
How marketable would anything be that you built on that lot is going to be?
You know, and I, I just want to just warn you all that, you know, if we have this discussion, a lot of this stuff is, is, is subjective, you know?
Yes, of course, yeah.
And, um, but I think there are some ways that we can dispose of these things for fair market value, but also, um, maybe we underwrite the cost. Uh, maybe we, uh, expect, um, the person buying it to own it for a period of time.
Mm-hmm.
Um, maybe we forgive some of the value. Um, we can also look at whether or not we want to, you know, have them pay over time.
Right, or maybe get credit for maintaining. I mean, if we're spending this mon, you know, depending on what we're spending a year to maintain it, you know, that could be credited back to them because once they've got it, we're not having to spend money to keep it maintained and we don't have the liability if something happens on the. you know, that could be credited back to them, 'cause once they've got it, we're not having to spend money to keep it maintained, and we don't have the liability if something happens on the property. Um, there's some benefit and some value to not having these properties, so.
I would agree, I would agree.
Yeah, we ought not to be in the land owning business unless it's a park.
Well, Don alluded to it, Wendy started, um, I don't know what day that was, last Wednesday or Thursday, um, Don, I, Don Dirks, Greg, and, and Larry, um, had a meeting, but weighed in later to how we inventory, because some are city owned properties that, um, are still used in day to day functions, like pump stations. Some are four fifty seven A acquisitions, some are parks department, and how do we get our hands around an inventory that? We need to get somebody with some GIS experience, I think, to, to put that together, and then we'll come up with, uh, protocol for when we acquire or dispose of land, so that we keep an updated, active list, and.
Be great.
And then things like Don talked about is maybe to get rid of some of those, because it only is attractive to the adjacent property owner, maybe there's a forgiveness after five years or something that, if they take it and maintain it, and.
Yeah.
So that we, because all those residual expenses associated with, you know, I don't know that you saw it, but what, what got Wendy going, is someone was going around town putting signs up, this is city owned property.
Excellent. Oh, they were putting signs on the property saying this is city owned property?
Obviously, they're never, like, a lot of times they get a little long, you know, or whatever.
Oh, I didn't know that, but again.
Was that just vacant lots, or was that also properties with, uh?
It was vac- it was overgrown vacant lots.
And rightfully so, you know, we've.
So, we're.
We took it, people.
We'd go around and put, we'd notice signs on people's yards, well, some.
And we shouldn't, yeah, we have to.
They say payback.
Well, you know, and I've said that all along, we cannot expect people to keep theirs up if we're not keeping ours up, and it's just too hard. There's too many small lots that have very minimal value, and not, we don't have them 'cause we ever wanted them, that's for darn sure. We have them 'cause people abandoned properties and, so.
And there are quite a few, uh, individuals who would like, like to purchase it, you know, it, it's much better, it seems to me the market value is, even if, even if the lot's wider than twenty, twenty-five, or thirty feet, who's gonna really build a house there? You know, the adjoining landowners, if they wanna split it, increase their side yard. Yeah, we may not get what the assessed value of it is, but in the real world, I would agree, that's probably not the real value, but. Why not just, then somebody's taking care of it, and we're not owning land. And somebody's paying tax on it then presumably, as opposed to just sitting there.
So, we're trying to line up an intern to help us out with that, um, Michael, if you haven't seen, Michael's in my office, who worked for Art last year as an intern, and he has done some preliminary work, but he's got a lot of other stuff going on, I don't know that he's got the time to do the job. Um, we've talked to Larry, he's, he's got, um, he, he teaches at UNO and has some students that he thinks maybe he can get somebody with some GIS experience as an intern, hopefully, or.
Be great.
Or a contract seasonal or something, then. At least we can get the inventory established, and then, again, develop a protocol that we don't lose track of where we are and what we own, and.
Thank you guys so much for working on that, yeah.
I don't think anybody knows.
Well, I know that at one point, and I think Greg probably is the one that sent it out to us, there was, you know, an attempt to get them all together, but then there's, they still have to be classified, and what, what is it we need and want, and what needs to be gotten rid of, so.
The purple map, yes.
Yeah, the purple map.
Yeah, and Greg's office started, and found out it was just kind of a monster to deal with, so.
It's not helpful that if you look for city property on the county courthouse, it's all in there different ways, so you never really find it all. It's kind of tough, but yeah, thanks for working on that, that'd be wonderful.
Yep.
I'll check on, I think we have, our department has all six fifty seven, so, I'll check to see what we spent on last year.
And just, and it's probably neither here nor there, but it's one of those, boy, the less we have to maintain and spend on those lots, the better off that's bearers are.
Well, when we.
Some one department, one department, perhaps.
When we know what we've got too, then I think we can be more aggressive in disposal.
Absolutely.
Kudos for taking that initiative.
Well, I didn't take it, Wendy did she, came in, showed me the picture of it. This is city property, and she says, I'm embarrassed, let's get going on this one.
Good.
Um, anything else on the public hearings? Uh, ordinances on first reading?
Uh, the development on, uh, on North Broadway, I was reading some of the, the comments about, uh, the concern with folks living on, uh, on Sylvan Drive, about the traffic, uh, turning into, uh, to that new development off of Sylvan. Do you know, was, was there ever a study or, or a thought given to, uh, to building a new, uh, a new bridge for, by that developer across Indian Creek? Sorry to keep pulling you up and down.
Need to send the front row today?
Extremely narrow grid.
Hey, that is.
Great, it is very narrow.
And I imagine that that cost would be pretty substantial if they were to take that on.
I would assume the cost would be very expensive, um, and I don't venture to guess what that is. No, they did not do a traffic study. Um, the primary concern with traffic was the relationship of the curb cut, uh, into the site relative to, uh, the bridge and the queuing lane to get on Broadway.
Yeah. Well, I ask because it, it appears to be a, a well thought out development unless you happen to own one of the two houses, uh, on either side of the driveway.
Yeah. But I don't know if, um, one of those houses might own the property being sold, but I'm not totally certain of that.
Is one of them owned by the church maybe?
I didn't check.
I'd have to investigate that.
Yeah, I wasn't sure from the map myself.
I didn't check it since there weren't any really big complaints or.
Okay.
We'll check that.
Appreciate it.
I would, I would say, uh, the cost of the bridge is about a million, million dollars. One million dollars, good bridge.
Ouch.
You know, I continue to get, not that it's related to this project, but it's related to the, um, ownership entity, um, continue to get complaints about parking on the street, um, on Elliott. You know, they built a parking lot, the management did, to alleviate some of that, that, the width of Elliott is not wide enough really where two cars can pass simultaneously when people park there. Management built a parking lot, I just went out and looked at it, 'cause I, when I was reviewing the agenda, um, last week, mistakenly thought it was that location until I, um, saw the maps, 'cause the sire review I get just has the verbiage and not the maps, and, um, but, there's a thirty parking space, parking lot, that had eight cars in it. And there were ten cars on the street, which the neighbors tell me, I don't, don't know who's here from Bethany, but tell me that the employees park there, because then they can go out and sit in their car and smoke on break, so that they don't have to stand outside, and so I, I think it's kind of a somewhat traffic hazard. In addition to that, on the Bethany side, there were numerous empty parking spaces available, which I don't know are for the residents or the, um, but I just wonder if it had time to post no parking on either side of that street.
There's some house, isn't there one or two houses that have no off-street parking on Elliott there, that sit up on those hills? Or no?
Yeah, there are some houses, I, I believe they have driveways to go up to their houses.
Oh, I thought that one didn't have a drive, we'd have to look at that.
We need to look at it.
Okay.
'Cause I'd agree.
Yeah, it's, it's a mess, you have to wait, and it's, yeah, today's world, people aren't patient in waiting. But it has nothing to do with this project, but it is Bethany's issue, and like I say, there's plenty of off-street parking, at least there was that day, it's just that, from what the neighbors tell me, the employees wanna park near their workstation, so they can run out and have a cigarette, and sit in the car and do it. I don't know that that's a. All right, anything else on, uh, ordinances in first reading?
Yes, I had some, uh, questions concerning five C, uh, new, uh, ordinance, or the replacement language concerning the local option sales tax. It, it appears, and I just wanna make sure that I'm reading the, the draft correctly, we're, uh, entirely taking out, uh, subparagraph two point ten, point twenty, and we're entirely, uh, striking the current language, two point ten, point thirty. We're then providing the, the new sentence and renumbering as two point ten, point twenty, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. So, having said that, and this is kind of a question for, for you, Dick, it, it kind of strikes me that that new sentence is kind of on its face, uh, contradictory with, with the language that remains under, uh, two point ten, point ten. In other words, that, that paragraph says, uh, remarks on the, on the ballot and what the ballot said, and then, uh, then the new language says that, uh, the city council is going to determine.
The appropriateness, which I.
Correct.
In my mind, it means they have to base that upon the language of the ballot, not one, I could repeat that down there in that sentence, but you, I read the, both sections have to be read together.
Okay, because.
I asked the same question this morning.
Okay, 'cause I, as, as I read that, it, it kind of gives city council carte blanche.
I, what I can do is, it puts a language in twenty that refers back to that, subject to the language set out in, in.
That wasn't the intent when we wrote it.
Subject to restrictions otherwise found in this chapter, as the city council.
I see where you're, yeah.
Yeah, because otherwise, the way I would read that is, it could be applied against any product, or, or any project in the CIP, park projects, animal shelter, regardless.
I guess my, my paragraph ten, or section ten, I kind of set the parameters, and then in twenty, the council will decide within those parameters what they can do, what they're gonna do, but I can.
Okay.
Make a specific reference back to those parameters in, or, in section twenty.
I guess ha- having, having said that, I'm not sure then how the, the proposed ordinance, uh, fixes the problem at, at hand as to whether or not we can apply, uh, local option sales tax revenue for, uh, for the levy maintenance projects.
When that comes forward to the council, that project, or, or admitting those monies for that project, the council would have to decide at that time whether or not it's appropriate within the parameters of the ballot.
'Cause I, yeah, I was, I was doing some, uh, some research over the weekend, and I went back and reread, uh, a portion of, uh, of chapter, uh, four twenty-three B, and I came across, uh, subparagraph six A, and it says that the local option sales tax may re- be repealed, rate increased, decreased, or the use thereof changed, uh, after election by majority of those voting, blah, 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 blah. In other words, so if you're going to designate another use than what appears on, on the ballot, then, then you have to go back to the voters to do that.
And I'd purport, it's not making that change, but, no, we disagree on that.
The language in the ballot was potentially left very broad, so we should go back and reestablish priorities at another date, and still, as long as we still stay within the language of the ballot.
So like the Indian Creek would be stormwater?
That would be my interpretation, yes, and that's why the word systems was, was put in there versus just the maintenance improvement of city streets or city users. Because it was envisioned at some point, we, the system would be expanded, and so that we could still utilize it on new, new highways or new streets that we needed to.
I appreciate it, it was a ballot initiative, but, uh, am I correct, and, and maybe we'll have to go back and look, I assume there was some discussion in the, in the council at the time about this. I'm, I'm not sure if that's required to, uh, or one way to, uh, get to a ballot initiative, I assume it is. I don't know if there was any discussion, I know we don't, certainly don't keep verbatim, especially that long ago, of, of like a legislative history, but, I wonder if, it might just be worth a look to see if there's anything in the council minutes at the time that, where this was, I gotta believe something like this was discussed. And it'd be nice to know what they were thinking when they wrote, when they sent it.
Well, I'll give you a somewhat history, is that initially they did, um, float a one cent sales tax, um, proposal that was for property tax relief, and that failed miserably. Then, we found out about the, um, combined sewer expense, and they floated a second one that came out with this ballot language that's before you. Um, a couple of years after that passed, and, and they then crafted an ordinance, um, that dealt with the sewers only, I think, and then a couple of years after that, they felt that it really didn't capture what they wanted to do, and so they changed the ordinance a couple of years after that to include, um, s- sewers in the streets above them, I think was.
Yeah, but still, yeah, staying within the language of the ballot, but kind of redirecting the focus.
Have, have you done a, a legal opinion on this, as of this time?
Not a formal legal opinion, no, as to whether or not levy systems are part of the stormwater.
Well, I'm thinking in terms of, you know, the, the fact that four twenty-three B requires, you know, that the ballot explained the specific use that has to be made out of the tax revenues, and.
Oh.
And now, and now, you know, we, we seem to be reinterpreting that, um, I guess my, my concern is.
You think we are.
Well, Des Moines just got its, uh, its hands wrapped pretty good for, for redefining how it's going to use franchise fees revenues, and.
No, that's not true.
They got wrapped good, but it was before levying a franchise fee that they couldn't justify.
Uh, correct, yeah, I, for, for changing the, the rate, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and just, just like that, the rate also has to, has to go before, and so, in, in reading other case law surrounding, you know, four twenty-three B, the, the court seems to get rather excitable when, when a government entity goes back and tries to change the, the terms of, under which the, the tax was, was originally set up.
What people originally.
So, so I'm concerned about whether or not they, they could potentially be excitable over this.
You know, I, I think subsequent changes, 'cause I understand the, the scope of consent or authority of the ballot initiative is that it's a ceiling, and so the council can act at various points, and it sounds like it's, it's done it, uh, in the past, or believed it did, at, at the very least, I suppose it's arguable, and it kept, it was changing it, but I would assume they were arguing that they were under the ceiling of the authority.
In the box.
Yeah, in the box, that's a better analogy, thank you. So, I, I guess, to me, it would matter what, at the time that it was floated as an idea, what they thought then, as opposed to later. If, if, if I were gonna look at, you know, that, that to me seems to be the relevant time, if there is a question about it, I'm not so sure there is, but.
I mean, the, the burning issue at the time the ballot was passed was, every time we'd get a half inch rain, thirty or forty basements would be flooded. And I, just, it didn't have to be a hard rain or anything, it just, the system just could not handle it, and that's why it passed so easily at that time. Because it was gonna be voted towards, uh, people saw, even though the language was broad, the promise of the council at that time was, we've gotta start working on the sewers.
And may, I, maybe we ought to just drag out what, what, uh, what legislative history might have as to, as to what they said, because if, if, if the discussion's really broad, it may alleviate the concerns, it may not.
I guess I'm confused though, since it says sewers. So, you, so, are you guys saying though that the concern would be anything other than Indian Creek? Or you don't, you think that the ballot wording doesn't allow us to even use it for Indian Creek?
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm afraid not, the way I'm reading the statute, and then, then how you look at, at kind of, how we're reworking the, the language on this in order to fit within the, the terms of the ballot language.
Well, from a, from a structural point of view, the legislative history, normally you, you look to the law, what it says first, plain meaning, or if it's got definitions that differ than regular English, you look to those. that differ than regular English, you look to those. And here, from the looks of it, it doesn't define it. They seem to be on the face pretty broad words, but you could interpret them a lot of ways, fair enough. And so sometimes in courts or other folks go to, look to, what did people say at the time? Because what you say later doesn't matter so much, because sometimes you misremember on purpose or accidentally to fit how things may have happened later, to fit what you want them to be.
Yeah, I understand.
What they thought at the time, I assume the discussion was rather broad. If it was.
Do you think that they just meant sanitary sewer? Or, I mean, what, I, I'm trying to understand, because I don't see a wording that changes, because they put the ballot language on here. So, and it said city sewer and street systems at the time, right? We're not changing any of that wording, so.
And, and I recall our, our previous discussion that we were talking about using these funds totally for, for the drainage creeks, not, not for the levees. And I see that in the subsequent package. But, but yeah, my, my concern is still whether or not those, those drainage creeks would be reasonably interpreted to be.
He's reading it more narrowly than perhaps you might be reading it.
So, if the, all of our storm sewer from a lot of those neighborhoods outflow right into Indian Creek, right, like North Broadway? I can see the culverts coming right in for the storm sewers right into that, right?
Yes.
So how can that not be a storm sewer, then?
Well, it may, the, the discussion at the time may, may not say anything at all. I've got to believe they discussed it. And the question to me is whether we've kept it, because, you know, that's a long time ago, and I'm not even sure how we kept. I mean, I don't know if there are audio tapes.
I honestly just don't get it, I, you know, and.
That may, that may bolster the.
I'm confused.
That may bolster, that may, that may alleviate his concern and bolster yours, or it might not.
I guess there's just no doubt in my, I guess, and that's the thing, there's no doubt in my mind that it is.
If there was no issue with Indian Creek at the time, because the discussion was primarily in the south end of town, I think was a huge amount where the flooding happened. It probably wasn't discussed, so if it wasn't discussed, then does that reinforce?
No, but it's.
Does a negative reinforce a negative? I don't get that.
It's just as vague, but you know, I, I'd be looking, for me, I'd be looking for a lot of discussion about how there's a lot of water getting into people's basements. We've got to do something about the water. If it's that broad, I know we can still argue about it, but it would seem to me that would bolster the argument that it would include runoff.
But there's, there's two, kind of two different angles being discussed here. You know, one is what does the, the, the words say? And then also the other side is what is the intent of the discussion? And I can, I can tell you the intent of the discussion, because I was there, was people were sick of being flooded. And at that time, our number one priority was our combined sewer system, is overloading our sanitary sewers. So, we spent millions, tens, hundreds of millions of dollars separating our sewers. The problem hasn't gone away. We've, all that water that used to get in the sanitary sewer now has to someplace else it has to go, and that's in the storm sewer system. And, and so every hill street we build, we, most of the hill streets didn't have storm sewer. It all flowed to the bottom of the hill, and hopefully there was something there to catch it. Every time we rebuild that hill street, we extend storm sewer up into the, the street to capture the water so it doesn't all collect at the bottom. So, I think the original purpose and the discussion was people were tired of being flooded. And that problem is still with us. And the levees, if you think flooding's bad now, wait till there's no levees.
No argument.
You know, I, I think, I, I think, I genuinely believe there is a legitimate argument to be made that it can be read, I, I would suggest more narrowly, I think that's how I was reading it, than, than some others might. I, I tend to think it can be read more broadly, but I see your point. And so if the language is, is at all vague, or at least arguably vague, then I would fall back on the intent. It's my, in my.
But sometimes even then, if the words of the ballot or the statute being interpreted are black and white.
Yeah, that's true, that doesn't matter.
You don't.
Yeah, and, and that's my, that's my concern, no matter how, how well intentioned the council is, and trying to find a solution here, that a lot of taxpayers may see it differently. We could conceivably be facing litigation. So I guess my, my helpful suggestion on this would be, could we perhaps schedule a, a public hearing and invite people to come in and speak on this? And if no one really provides an objection to this, then we know whether or not there's really a concern out there amongst the, the taxpayers and voters.
There, there'd be no problem in, when you, assuming you pass this on second consideration and send it for public hearing the next year.
Would that truly solve, though? I mean, if someone still felt they were aggrieved, I, I'm not sure that would cut off all.
Trying to figure out who'd be aggrieved at.
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure who would have standing, and I'm setting aside. Setting aside all of that, which I recommend would be an interesting nightmare. What, would that, would that solve the legal, I mean, if, if, if it's correct that it should be read more narrowly, and we've gone outside the authority and someone sues, and that's bound to be the case, and we have to refund the money. Would having a public hearing cut short the requirement? If that's true, then it should have been another ballot of the people, I think. I'm not sure a public hearing would solve that. I mean, the spirit might be good, but I'm not, does it really solve? And that may be something.
I don't think it solves anything, because if someone could say, I didn't know about it, I'd show up.
Because it's not a vote, and so I'm not sure if that counts.
I don't, do we just need somebody to determine whether or not, you know, starting with Indian Creek, whether it is or is not a storm sewer? I mean, because.
It is.
You're much of the language.
And, and it is. I mean, I believe it is, but who, who would say it isn't? Where's all that water going to go if it doesn't go there? And that's how it gets out of town. That's how we get it out of the city.
My argument is that four twenty-three sets the, sets the clear standard as far as the, the state of Iowa is concerned. And, and, and it uses the words, specific purpose or purposes for which.
You're saying it is the specific purpose of use. I mean, I, I just don't get why it's not specific.
And that's how I get to.
I mean, do we just need Dick to give us a formal legal opinion that any guts are easiest way to go forward is just, how do you, Dick, give us your formal opinion?
I'll, I'll do, I'll do some research on that between now and the hearing.
That, do you have, do you have the history of that? I mean, I, I don't know if that's changed. I don't know if.
We should have the minutes, so it should be, be had before.
The state law may have been different at the time, and I assume, well, I guess I should assume, which would be, be relevant inquiry at this point.
Right, I mean, we're stuck with the state laws that exist today.
Are we always? Sometimes, isn't it at the time? I mean, if the people voted under an understanding of the law, you know, I appreciate most people wouldn't know what, you know, the ignorance of laws, no excuse type thing. If, if the rules of the time weren't quite so specific, would we be stuck with that today, to put it crudely? I, I don't know.
But you're, you're assuming just because, that because it's storm sewer and not sanitary sewer? I mean, I'm trying to understand where.
I certainly wasn't about sanitary sewer. It was about storm sewer, because it was storm water.
Well, and they were combined.
It was the issue.
So.
And I'm just talking about the structure of the argument. I'm trying not to get into the merits.
I'm just, I'm just trying to understand, because you're saying the state law says you have to do what it says. And it says sewer, so where's your concern at, so that I understand?
Where are we not doing what it says, I guess? Where are we not doing what the ballot?
Yeah, that's where I'm concerned. I don't think I understand.
You would, you would read it more narrowly.
I, I certainly would.
And how would you define the sewer that's in the ballot language?
I, I think at the time, people understood it to be that storm.
A lot of territory.
And.
Well, again, they're all interrelated. The systems are all, the components are all interrelated. So, for instance, we have a pump station, a sanitary sewer pump station that pumps sewers. It has a roof on the building. So, I mean, that's part of the system, in my opinion. It doesn't function without that component. And it's just like the levees, the sewer system will not function without a levee. There will be catastrophic failure of the sewer systems. Therefore, in my mind, a levee is a component of that system, an integral component.
And you have, you have the cross reference or the ship's passing night, perhaps, of the professional engineering versus the, the legal precedent? I don't know, maybe there is a case that had decided, if, right, I was a pretty good court in history, on this issue, or something that could be used as an analogy where this has been defined, or, and that came up, I don't know, maybe.
I could use some research.
I mean, a lot of cases always have experts in them, so there'd be engineers testifying in cases, so maybe a court eventually said, yep, that's what it means. That would be fantastic.
We'd have to find somebody that had a ballot initiative that was worded exactly the way ours was worded.
Well, that'd be another, that'd be another thing to see if it was a libation or how it's.
What can't be done is the attorney general's been to.
Oh, yeah.
For post action, but that takes a lot of time. You can't plus it, that would be a little legislative.
Because, because my concern is, no, no matter how, how worthy the, the project is, and, and if you can argue that somehow there's a nexus here, we're still diverting money out of, from a fund to pay for sewer system and for street maintenance and putting it towards a, a levy project. And at the end of the day, I just want to make sure that the taxpayers are absolutely clear that, that that's, that's what's being done.
Of course, at the end of the day, the taxpayer's going to pay for it no matter what.
Well, I, I understand.
Well, no, no, that's, that's, that's not a true statement, because the taxpayers that shop in Council Bluff, be they from Nebraska, will pay for it. Or the taxpayers from Council Bluff can put a hundred percent of it though.
Yeah, I mean, that is the other option. If we don't use local option sales tax, we can general.
With interest.
Well, I'd love to see, I'd love to see what, if there is any guidance on that. Otherwise, what we're discussing is, it is truly interesting, but might be, it'd be nice to know what, if there is anything. Maybe there isn't, and then we're right back here. But if there is, then it may answer our question.
Just need to understand why it's not part of this.
Yeah, I just, I'm too, I'm just.
Well, and, and if it were you, now, so, I, I just want to make sure I get this, because I, I don't want to make a mistake myself in, in thinking this is fine, but, you know, I guess right now, my mind is on, you know, what is Indian Creek? But you, so if, if they weren't spending any mon. Or Mosquito Creek, right? If the money wasn't being spent on the actual structure of the levee and just on the creeks that the outflow all goes into, would that be considered sewer?
That, that really strikes me as kind of a arguable proposition.
Really?
And, and I, I guess what, what we're coming back to is, is again, the, the hard cool requirements of, of the Iowa chapter, which is going to prevail ultimately, and if a dispute breaks out over this.
What does the plain language mean? And if it's not plain and legally vague, which can be different than regular English vague, then what was the intent at the time? And I think that requires Dick and his staff to take a look at that.
I think let's just let Dick do a legal opinion first, for example.
Which is going to be a little bit time, I think, actually a lot of time.
Well, again, I was there. The intent, in my mind, my perspective, my perspective was stop flooding us. That was the perspective that I saw, that their, their assignment to me was stop flooding.
I, I've got to believe it's going to show up in council minutes or probably front page stories in the nonparel in the mid-eighties about this. In fact, I vaguely recall, vaguely.
So it's going to go back to what people thought they were voting on and not what the law actually said, or what the ballot actually said?
No, I'm focusing on what the ballot said.
Okay, so.
The ballot says the number one.
So then you'd be focusing on whether or not the levy system and the, and the canals with, or the Indian Creek and things were actually part of the sewer system? Okay, good.
Yeah, the language, yeah, unless, unless it's vague, you can't go through the intent.
Okay, good, because that, that makes me feel better, because I think that, you know, I.
Who knows what the individual intent of everybody voted yes or no was.
Well, you don't need to look at that, you just need to look to general, particularly the people who submitted it, so what the council said. But I agree, you don't even get there unless you're legally vague. And that's a pretty high standard.
So we just need to get the research to show whether levy and, okay, I'm good.
It doesn't hurt to have that answer.
But I guess, though, this is the body that would decide it. If we're not going to use local option sales tax.
What's plan B?
In about two minutes, we're going to have to decide what plan B is, because.
Yeah, and I'm hoping that Mr. Ringenberg will have a plan B, because I know he was telling, talking with the Republican Party about making sure to come down here to, about this issue. So I'm assuming that Mr. Ringenberg has a solution.
Well, and that's why I raised this point many, many weeks ago, dating back to when we first discussed this in the capital improvement program. Because this is an important program, and we need to be certain of our funding.
I'm certain. I, I'm flat ass, dead ass certain.
I am too, but, you know, my question, though, is, is.
I tend, I tend that way, maybe it's the lawyer who says it always depends. I can see his point.
And that may be it.
I'm not, I'm not leaning towards it, but I can, I can see the point.
I can.
I, I don't, but I never questioned it from the beginning. I mean, in my mind, it was very, very clear that if those systems aren't in place, there is no sewer system. So I don't see how you even divide the two. But I guess what I'm going to go back to is we've got to make then some decisions. And, I mean, generally, people have, you know, will come then with other ideas of how to, to fund this if we're not going to use this. And I, I don't know, did you have some ideas on maybe some other way we could do it, rather than risk misinterpreting?
Yes, I, I suggested back several months ago that, that we, that we go after a ballot initiative. I, we discussed via emails that.
Oh, so a new initiative, and on top of this one?
No, about, a separate ballot initiative to, to correct the language going forward to the voters now. Also, also discussed other revenue sources, which you very well pointed out that the problems.
There are about four or five of them, but.
Yep, and those are painful.
Four of those five come directly from the taxpayers of Council Bluff. This one can be supplemented by anyone who shops in Council Bluff, which.
But the other ones would raise their taxes. There's just no way around raising their taxes.
And adding to the debt.
To be clear, I want to do it the sales tax way. If the current system wouldn't allow it, and we were forced to go to a ballot, I would be one of the people out there advocating for it.
Oh, I would be too, but here's my concern, if it goes to a ballot issue.
You can get a.
The way nobody votes these days, like really nobody votes, we don't even get people to show up here when they're worried about our budget. So, you know, my question is, is then, could a few people make it to where we don't even have that for the roads and the sewers? I mean, could it eliminate it?
No.
No.
That, that's worrisome.
Well, based upon all the excellent arguments that we've had today about the, the need for the levy repairs and, and the engineering work and whatnot, I, I think a fairly decent case has been neat, made for why the work needs to go forward. And I think if we have an adult discussion with the taxpayers and the voters as to why this absolutely has to be done.
I understand what you're saying, but you saw how few people showed up to vote the other day. I mean, it was ridiculous. And so, you know, when you do something like that, you got to be willing and have a way to replace the money if they choose to vote it down and do away with that and it, with the sales tax. So, I mean, could, I mean, if you're going to put a ballot issue on there, then it can go one of two ways. Either you're going to approve the wording change or eliminate it, right?
No.
Well, if, if Al's correct that, that we're going beyond the ballot language, regardless of whether we're worried about the outcome, we would have to go to vote for people. I, I mean, I don't.
To change the wording, or would it be an initiative to either?
I, I think it would be to amend the language to, to fit far more specific language than I suspect it was.
Or to keep it the way it is now.
Correct.
There's no.
Not to eliminate.
Not to eliminate it, to be, oh my gosh, we could be flooded by the time.
Is that right, Dick? If you went for a new sales tax initiative, you can't go back to the old way. It, it's an up or down vote, and you're, it's wrong.
It's either it is or it isn't.
I don't know, you can read back in some obscure.
I'm not sure.
I'll get with you on that, Dick, because.
I'm not ever going to be willing to risk that with just few people that go to the polls.
I agree.
We need, we need to take care of our citizens and.
I wouldn't want to risk it either, but if we, if that's what we were required to do, we'd have to do it. I, I don't always think we.
I don't think we're required to do it.
Well, see, that's one thing, I, I'm very sympathetic to the argument that we're not. And I, and I think this research will definitely answer it one way or the other. Maybe it'll still be argued, but I suspect it's going to be broad enough.
Yeah, so I think we just wait until we get that back.
So let's just wait.
So, but Greg, how long can we wait?
We have to do it anyway.
Huh?
We have to do it. It's only the first week, so, like, Dick, do you think that you could probably have it to us for?
I don't think. I don't think.
So then we get.
This doesn't require a sales tax.
At least to me, in my opinion, it does affect this vote.
No, nothing.
Now, he, now, Al, you may disagree and think it affects this vote. I don't think it affects this vote. I don't think it would affect it until we were actually trying to spend the money. And that vote's not coming up, certainly not this month, I wouldn't think. So I don't think it's going to delay.
So we can make this change with that? Because I don't think that's.
Yeah, that would not be my position on this, but I do think it allows us to go forward with the package to the state in order to get that money rolling.
Oh, yeah, that's for sure.
Yep, and we cannot, cannot under any circumstances hold that up.
We don't have, do we have to identify to the state where the match is coming from though? We don't. Okay, good. Very good.
You're committing that you will do the project.
Yeah.
If there is.
So you're committing you'll have to come out of pocket some of.
It's a sales tax tip.
We have to.
Right, right. Well, let's just take it.
I agree.
Well, let's put it in perspective. You're committing that you're going to raise 50 million, 40-some million of new tax revenue if you don't use the sales tax, is what you're committing to.
And don't get me wrong, I am for doing it the sales tax way, 100%. And I think the language is broad, more than broad enough. I just see enough of an arguable point that I think Dick ought to look into it, just to look into it. I don't think there's harm in that.
I agree that the sales tax is probably the best, worst, least.
I really think it's the only way.
Least bad alternative.
That's the only way.
Yeah.
No, I just, I'm just concerned. I hope that we don't have anybody out there trying to raise an effort with people who have them have a problem with something that is going to cost so much more money for them in the long run. I'd love to find a way to protect our city from the floods without a burden so great on our taxpayers that they just can't afford to do it.
Because in addition to the base costs, if we don't use sales tax, we have interest expense on.
Well, and that's it. And that was what I was hoping at some point, maybe by the next meeting, we should at least have an idea of what that number is and, you know, what it would cost the taxpayers on their tax bill if we had to do a bond issue and interest for these things, you know. I just think they have a right to know that.
The way we get a structured sales tax, we don't think we need to borrow the money.
It's around $20 million. We ran a scenario.
Oh, okay.
I would agree with you, but, you know, if it comes, if it's definitive, and I doubt it would be that, it would be against us and we'd have to do a ballot initiative, I would hate it miserably. But if that's what we had to do, we'd have to do it.
We won't do it.
I don't think we get, I don't think we get to that point, because I think Dick probably.
I don't think we'd risk that. I mean, if, in fact, that is the way it is, it's either yes or no. You're either going to have this ballot, you're either going to have this tax or you're not. I can't imagine you could get enough votes on the council to risk people that way. Because we still have so much to do. I mean, there's just no way.
You know, unless there were definitive case that what we're, what we're contending, appear to suggesting to do is illegal, I will look for it. So if that's what you're asking me.
Yeah, I just, I just hope we never have to get to a situation like that.
Maybe I'm overthinking it.
Oh, if it's an up or down vote on the, I guess what Sharon's saying, if it's an up or down vote on a one-cent sales tax and it wipes out the old ballot initiative.
I think it would. I would never want to see it go that far. We're just going to have to, you know, then our options are limited to raising the money through bond issue or going ahead and not certifying the levees and let up. And because the cost to our taxpayers for flood insurance would be so phenomenal, the results would be the same.
Dick, obviously.
Not the same, but close.
I think you've caught that portion of the discussion, Dick, that if you'd incorporate that into your decision as well because as I read this, I think you could craft the ballot initiative only for purposes as to whether or not the use was going to be changed or altered, not whether or not.
Redirecting the.
Correct. And that's just my interpretation of paragraph 6A sub 2 under that part of the code.
Just, I did just some quick Google searches and I've got the plumbing code for the city of New Orleans and they speak of levy systems as part of the stormwater system. I just think it's kind of a natural thing.
Well, and we may have some precedent out there that I wasn't able to locate because I don't have Lexis, but it may be out there. I just didn't see it when I was doing my research over the weekend.
When I say I can see it, you can, there's always somebody who will argue with Sue on anything. And I just want to make certain they don't have a definitive hook where they're right under Iowa law. I suspect they're not, but let's just, let's just know upfront. I think that, that's sensible.
I don't have an internet on here.
Really?
Not in here. I can probably do it on my phone.
I forgot to charge mine, so I'm reading on my tiny screen.
If we take 2 million to front-end load the expense in the first year or if it's 4 million for two years, because at some point, the flood mitigation contract money we're going to get down the road will become a steady funding stream, which is why we can do it without interest expense because we can front-end with the sales tax. If for some reason, a court would decide that we erred, then my assumption would be that we'd have to reimburse that money somehow. And so, our net exposures, whatever that front-end load is probably, it's not that we have to pay back hundreds of millions of dollars.
Nobody would wait that long to sue.
Yeah.
Well, wouldn't you be paying the city back?
Yeah, you'd be just taking it out of one pocket and putting it in the other.
And that is indeed what happened in Des Moines with the, what was that called? The franchise. They raised another tax to pay off the decision that the previous tax should have been levied. So it can be a circular nightmare.
All right.
Which I don't think we reach.
Anything else on the ordinances under First Read? How about the resolutions? Any questions under the resolutions?
On 6B, the Mid-City Trail phase, I just want to make sure I understood the money flow on this one. It made reference to CIP projects under fiscal years 12, 13, and 14. So, had those prior year monies already been spent on portions of the trail so far? And the additional contribution to this is the 150,000 from the city? Or is this three years' worth of contributions at 450,000?
Let me start at zero and then we can work.
Okay.
The money that's available to us from through tip and through tap is $693,000. That has been in the map of plan for about as long as I've been here. Right after I got here, that sort of got put in there. So we have assembled money through those CIPs to make the match for that amount. So that CIP money has not been spent. It has not been encumbered for other projects. And we have, through the CIP process and good planning, we've been able, as a city, to assemble that money for the time that the 696 was available.
Okay.
Does that answer what you asked?
Yeah, I found the entry for the current year or for the current CIP, but not for the prior year. So were those equal amounts? Was it, I think that the city contribution was 150K.
It varied from year to year.
It did.
And it was in, I think it's as we had in the ordinance or in the cover letter. I think those numbers were there. Yeah, okay, well, I can even talk about it year by year.
Thank you.
PR 12, there's 23,000 left from that fund. There, I believe there was 100 that year and that was spent on other trail projects.
Okay.
And I believe PR 13 has 130 left and I believe there was 20 spent on other projects. And then 14 and 15, there's 150 and 100, which represents the entire amount that is still available.
Okay. Got it. I just wanted to make sure I understood what the, excuse me, the overall cost was.
Well, and.
For the city's contribution.
Right, and let me say this. We don't know what the cost is yet. All you're doing today is allowing us to move forward with an application. We have, we will be advancing to you a design team to do the work. So we have good cost estimates. We think we're pretty close. But the relationship between what's before you and what we'll spend is still somewhat up in the air.
Okay.
Larry, before you go, I just wanted to commend you and your department for pulling off again with the weather against you a second. A fantastic multi-week festival as well as the trees on North Broadway. Did you want to point that out? It's fantastic.
Well, I've, a good group that stands behind me every day and helps here with the other departments. We couldn't do it just ourselves.
Definitely, and please let them know because I think a lot of times, I know folks are quicker to talk about things they might not like, all of us, me included, and it's nice for people to hear when praise when it's well deserved.
Thank you.
I told Larry today, last night, I sat with some Parks people and I said, you know, thanks for almost two and a half weeks of extra effort on now you can rest. And the guy looked at me like I was crazy and said, "On Wednesday, the Triple Crown baseball starts."
That's right.
And as Larry said, we've gone from 12-hour days to 24-hour days.
Are we going to get raged into the dugout again?
Not that we're in the golf cart.
You're in the golf cart.
So that's a huge deal. It brings, what, over 500 youths, the largest in the Midwest youth softball. Anything else on the resolutions?
I was just curious very quickly on the request by Consolidated Concrete. I was kind of curious, was there an estimate as to how much that was going to cost them to hook up to the city hydrant versus doing a separate well?
Steve Kay, attorney for Consolidated.
Yeah.
We do have information, and there's a couple other gentlemen here from the company. Aaron Luth is the person that signed the request for the variance. And he's the quarterback for the project and in charge of sales. And Randy Stark is the operations manager for the company. The information that we've got in regard to the cost came from Don Dirks, I believe, of using his background and information, approximately $25,000. And that would be to install the line and keep it there on a going-forward basis.
Okay, and how's that compare to going the well route?
We're about half to maybe two-thirds of that cost if we're going to go ahead and install the well.
Okay.
Presumably, a well can be capped, but I highly suspect a line is not going to be removed from the ground, but it's just going to sit there and get hit someday.
That's the cost that we, isn't included in the 25,000. At the time that our lease would conclude with Mr. Adams, which is end of 2016, if not before, we returned the property as we got it.
Really?
And so, we haven't talked with them about that specific line. But this is bare property. It doesn't have housing or buildings or so forth. And so it's a little different than if you're connecting to a commercial structure and so forth. You're going to the middle of a field and our concrete plant would be a ways in onto the property. I don't know exactly how far down the line would go, but any future development, I expect that line would be rerouted or in the road. So there'd be some additional cost to make sure that that wasn't a problem, whether it's on our end or so forth.
As I read the correspondence, it seemed that staff had no choice based on the language of, the relevant language, to deny it. I did not get the impression that they necessarily would have taken that position had it not been written so definitively and very much almost invites a variance, which I'm very inclined to give.
That language, we spoke with Mr. Dirks and he was very clear that it's within the 200-feet threshold and as a result, that it's a black-and-white issue as far as denial. He did tell me, and he can certainly elaborate, that that wasn't his personal opinion. I think he may have been agnostic one way or the other, but he wasn't a ginnit. Then we spoke with.
Some letter read.
Don Drummy with the Public Works, the waterworks folks, and he's the one that had the cost information. And same information was that this is not something that he's opposed to us putting the well in. Okay? And we're looking forward to doing the work in the area. This is a new temporary plant consolidated as for Nebraska operations. This is a temporary plant, but there's a lot of work on the interstate. And as you've heard from other folks, there's a lot of work in Council Bluffs. And the company is not ready to say that they've got a permanent location, but they're actively pursuing one. So we hope that it's a start of a long relationship.
And then, do you want Steve to come back tonight?
I don't think it's necessary. I think that, I was just curious as to how much money we were talking about. My concern was whether or not it jeopardized the feasibility of the project that you're engaged in. And it doesn't sound as though it does. This is just a matter of making some accommodation for that darn language that's way too strict.
We'll go forward with the project. We'll do the work. It's an easier way for us to work and it's consistent with our other four operations.
Seems far more of a goodwill gesture than it does, it's not simply putting weather. I don't think you did.
If you don't have to come back.
I, I don't think we would.
All right.
Thank you, council.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions in regards to the resolutions? Anything on the applications permits? Dick, or what was I going to do under other business tonight?
How's that be the motion on the hearing that we held this afternoon?
Okay. All right, the executive session?
Motion to go into executive session. Can we do both at the same time? For property acquisition and litigation purposes.
Second.
This is a perfect topic for it.